Let me get some, just put business out of the way. Members, you had an opportunity to check the minutes from the last hearing. If there's no edits or changes, I would take a motion for approval. Make a motion by John to approve as submitted. A second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. All those in favor? That's unanimous. I'd like to personally welcome back on behalf of the board, John Dagnes. We've missed you. We've probably cursed you since you haven't been here, but it's nice to see you back, John, and welcome. Board members, just for a bit of information, I don't know if any of you have received an email. The confirmation letters went out concerning the 40B process and the outlines for the development groups concerning their responsibilities based on the decisions of this board as they were lined up and permitted. They'll still have to get through the process of getting water and also the process of continuing to cooperate with the zoning board concerning any aspects of their permitting process, and that includes paying for additional fees for consultants that we have a fund built up on in the event we need additional assistance from any consultants as the development, if and when they do move forward. But I did get that update from Jerry Moody this week. If you did not get a copy of that, I can get it forwarded over to you by email. Did anybody receive that copy?
No.
Okay. All right, I'll make sure I can get that out to you. Okay, with that after 7:05, this is going to be on the continued application of Union Point Havens, date of adventures, Cedar Street in Milford. Turning to Tony Ellis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to request another continuance. As you know, the planning board has made a recommendation that the streets have not yet been defined in Silver Hill Road. We've hired an engineering firm to complete the survey. An application has been submitted to the planning board to determine the position of the streets. They're going to hold a public hearing on this in early December, and we would respectfully request that you continue us until your first meeting, I believe, the second Thursday in December. So we'll give the planning board the opportunity to determine the exact boundaries of the parcels so that when you have the application in front of you, you can make a determination on facts that have been certified by surveyors. I made a representation to the board last time that if I asked for a further continuance, that I would renotice the abutters. I have the abutters list and have it updated, and to the extent that this board grants the continuance, then I will personally send out notice of that date to all of the abutters so they have the opportunity to come in and be heard at that meeting. At that time, we hope to have a plan that has been certified by the planning board showing the location of Silver Hill Road, both the parcel that connects to Congress Street and the parcel that leads down to Silver Hill from Congress Street.
So you're going, you may even be, depending on what that finding is from the engineering department, you may or may not need us. Is that correct?
Well, we're going to need you for a sideline variance, we believe. We may not need you, that's correct.
We're still doing your engineering.
The engineering is completed, and we're looking to see how we're going to foot the plan. It's a good question. We may not need you at that point.
So that's going from the planning board before our 12-13 hearing?
Correct, sir.
When's the planning board hearing, do you remember?
It's the two, it's the week before, so they'll have time to give you a recommendation.
Okay. All right, with that, any problem for a continuance, board members?
I have a problem with it.
So you do not?
I would, this is going to be absolutely the last continuance. We have people here in the audience.
If they request a continuance, we have the right to allow it, so.
You have the right to deny it also.
So I'll take a motion for a continuance. Motion by John at a second. Anybody?
Mr. Counselor, I would tell you that if we ask for another continuance, I'll withdraw it and resubmit.
Okay.
If we had to do that. But I, again, I'm going, I'm asking for this continuance with the understanding that I will mail notice to all of the abutters. I have the abutters list in my file. You tell me the date and the time, and I'll put a notice out to them.
Okay, with that, I'm here.
One thing, if you're going to, if you're going to withdraw it, could you notice the abutters also?
I will.
So they don't.
If we know by that time, I'll let them know whether there's going to be a meeting or not.
Plus or minus, whatever.
Correct.
Excuse me, if it doesn't, if they get it, what difference does it make? How can they just get it without us having to say?
He's asking for a continuance. This is not a hearing on it because they've asked for a continuance because they're not done. So we don't know what they're submitting yet. So a little bit of patience. Again, a lot of, sometimes this happens because the engineers just don't get their work done in time. So they don't have anything to submit because the engineers are not completed or have not submitted anything as of yet. They're asking for the continuance, therefore I'm okay with the continuance as long as the abutters are notified.
So the date would be the second Thursday in December at 7:00 PM here at the town hall?
12-13.
I will send a notice to the abutters pursuant to the abutters list that I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more question about that. Excuse me, Mr. Antoine Ellis, can you stay here for a minute? What is the problem the engineers are having during a survey?
They're done.
Please?
They're done.
They're done, they've done their survey?
Yes, the plan, the survey plan has been submitted to the planning board. The planning board's going to hold a public hearing on that.
We've never seen any evidence of a survey being done out there. We walk around that lot constantly, there are no new posts, no new paint lines, nothing.
I can't answer a question as to how the surveyors do their work on Milford Roads.
By remote control. I'm sorry.
Joe, you want to sign this for me, please? That being after 7:10? Excuse me. All right, this is also on the, after 7:10 on the continued application of Court Street LLC Incorporated, Whatwood Road. Special permit pursuant to sections of 3.7 or other applicable positions of the zoning bylaw permit the removal of earth and gravel from the property known off Cortland Street, Assessors Map 59, Lot 19, consisting of 6.5 acres more lots with parcels owned by the applicant. The relief is sought in order to permit the removal of earth and gravel in compliance with the requirements of the bylaw and so between reasonable restrictions placed on the permit by the zoning board of appeals. With that, counsel here for the applicant? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm aware that there may be possible two recusals tonight, which would leave the board with only three members to vote, and we need four votes. So we would respectfully request a continuance due to the fact, again, I don't.
You have a full board, right?
We do have a full board. I don't think you have a full board tonight.
Okay.
Based on the recusals from before.
All right. With that, there'll be a continuance till, you requested this till 12-13?
Please.
12-13.
We can get notices on that?
Kelly, how did we handle them the last time on the continuance?
This one, I, people wrote.
The emails, we still have that, right?
I sent, no, I sent them, the people that signed their name to the list that I brought out in the hallway, I mailed a copy of the agenda to them.
Okay, great, okay. You still have that?
Who we, who we talked to?
Yes.
Now that they went in and disturbed the ground, they left the rocks, and with all the rain, my backyard is getting flooded with dirty water now. I've got videos, I've got pictures. The tree guys were written in, left the rocks.
I don't know, I, did you check with the building department? Maybe they can try to assist.
It's constantly getting flooded now.
Did you check with the building department on?
That's who I checked with.
Yeah. And then we'll, they'll get to someone and be able to try to address your situation. All right? Joe, you're going to need to sign this as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Night.
Night.
This is 7:15. Okay, this is on the continued application of John Lucas of 15 Rowan Way for variance and provisions of section 2.4, 2.5, and the other positions of the bylaw in relation to parcel of land on 19 Beach Street Extension. This is a continuance of a hearing. The variance relief is sought to permit the subdivision of a parcel into two lots, one to contain the existing two-family residence and the other constructive proposed single-family residence. Variance relief is requested from the minimum lot requirements where 15,000 is required and 10,000 is to be provided additionally on the required lot. There's some plans here, guys, I think. One, is that?
Yes.
Two, one down there. Attorney, is this, is this the same one? Same lot, same lot?
Yes.
You guys all set there? Kelly, would you, can you make sure that?
I don't think I can, but I'm not married yet. It's either here or up here.
Planning board hearings are down here.
I have no idea.
Planning board's here, when they need.
The next meeting.
Yeah, it's public, it's in the Daily News, too. They publicize the hearings in the news. I think it's the 20th, yes, or earlier. Okay. All right, this is on the continuance, so, of course, is the five full-time members. So Suzette, why don't you, let's go start from the scratch just to kind of update everybody on where we are.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. My name is Suzette Ferreira. I'm here with John Lucas, who is seeking a variance to be able to get an additional lot on Archer Avenue. He currently owns a parcel that's a rectangular-shaped lot that has frontage on both Archer Avenue and Beach Street Extension.
It's 25 feet.
The dwellings on the Beach Street side of the lot, there are two, two houses on that lot, and one is a single family that was built in the 1940s, and the other is a raised ranch that was built in 1945. The last time that I was here, there was some questions about whether or not, there were questions about that garage with the house apartment above it, and they was looking for some more information, and what we found out, and I do have something from the assessor's office, is that was actually built in 1945, and it was built as a raised ranch. So it wasn't built as a garage with a house over it. It's actually described as a raised ranch. So it is legal, it is conforming, or it's a pre-existing non-conforming.
You're going to say certainly not conforming?
Not conforming. And I do have that, that note from the assessor's office that shows that it was built in 19.
Are you showing, can you give me, are you going to give me a field card?
It's not, it's not the field card, it's. This is from the assessor's office. So that came from them. It shows that it was a raised ranch built in 1940.
And where's the field card for this? So if it's a raised ranch?
Yes.
What's on, what's, what's the room, what are the rooms, if you don't mind me asking?
It's a two-bedroom.
It's two bedrooms?
And one bath.
And one bath? Because it just looks like a garage with an apartment above it.
It does, yeah. It's just maybe classified, I guess.
So they don't reflect this on the updated field card you have there?
No, I have that, I have an updated field card as well.
It shows them both?
Yes.
On the lot?
Yes.
Can I see that? So no problem, we can move the house over to the lot and it's done.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the answer, right?
And two separate field cards. This is the garage.
So it's one of two cards?
Yes.
Okay.
And that one. And Archer Ave actually has its own.
This is not two units, correct?
No, that's only one single family. And the Archer Ave parcel also has its own separate field card.
This is, this is from the.
Okay. Yeah, and the field card stipulates so people know it's undevelopable based on the field card.
The art grant.
Based on this, based on the, yeah, because it doesn't have 15,000 square feet. Okay, so let's go over where the hardship is. Let's get that out of the way first, because right now, there's no hardship.
Well, the hardship's.
There's no hardship. You bought this, they bought it a year ago. I just want to get the boards up to snuff. So they bought it a year ago. You bought it in as this condition, so this is an undersized lot, the zoning going back to 1969 over there, a 15,000-square-foot lots. So when this was purchased, everybody knew that this was not a buildable lot, correct?
Well, the hardship here is he is getting taxed on the parcel.
When this was purchased, it was clear that it was not a buildable lot.
He didn't buy it with the intent, he did not buy it thinking that he was, that he had an extra lot there.
Okay, yeah, okay.
That was not the intent when he originally bought the property.
So how do we, how do we get the raised ranch in conformity with the side lot lines and real lot lines?
Well, the raised ranch, both parcels are going to continue to be non-conforming whether or not an additional lot is given on Archer Avenue. The lot on Archer Avenue is going to have zero impact on what happens to Beach Street. The only impact by providing a variance to give a lot for the Archer Ave parcel is going to be an impact to Archer Avenue. The Beach Street parcel will remain the same.
Well, there's no hardship. There's no hardship to be able to grant that, that I can see unless you're moving this over to here, or this is coming offline, to conform to be able to make this more in compliance with the zoning regulations. That's what I'm trying to get at.
The hardship here is that he's being denied the use of that parcel of land. It is, it is currently assessed as a separate parcel. He is getting taxed on it as a separate parcel, but he's not able to use that as a separate lot.
Right, because it's not the right size.
Right. But without being able to get a variance, then he's not able to use that land.
Right. Well, nice shot, cool. So you're not offering to do anything or move anything, is that correct?
Such as?
Like taking the apartment offline in order to get this?
We did have, we did have some discussions about this a little bit. I'm going to say part of the problem is that he recently renovated that, you know, entire unit, so that is one of the issues. No?
I don't have a problem with subdividing the lot. As long as the back of the garage goes away, the back of this part of that lot over there, I'm okay with it.
Oh, the other thing that, that we were asked for the last time we were here was to find out whether or not Archer Avenue had a street number, and we did check, and it would be 18 Archer Avenue.
John, you have any questions?
No.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
Bob?
No.
Mark?
You want to put a house, you want to have three houses, one, two, three, right?
That's what, what it would have.
And when's going to put?
The additional house, again, on Archer Avenue, would not be detrimental to that area. Lots in that other area, they're all approximately the same size. Again, Archer Avenue doesn't have any traffic on there. The only impact would be to Archer Avenue, would not be to Beach Street, and Beach Street would continue to be the same, whether or not the variance is provided. It would still continue to be non-conforming. There's no way that we could ever make those two houses on that lot be more conforming.
Right, but you've got 20,000 square feet between them, correct?
Correct.
And you want to put three houses in them. Whereas the other ones are non-conforming, as you said, they're the same-sized lots, but they only have one house, two houses. Everything is one house, two houses. You want one, two, three.
That's what I mean.
That's the difference. So, yes, they're the same-sized lots, but you happen to have two on one of those same-sized lots, and now you want to put a third.
Can I ask him a couple of questions?
Sure.
He's got two bedrooms on the lot.
Here?
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
What's that?
Yeah.
Better than the other one.
Yeah.
Or not?
I'm fine with that, I mean, you know, I'm fine with that. I can do it, I can look at that.
Don't focus on this.
Yeah, we should focus on this lot. Take that off.
This line is just so tight.
I know.
I'm okay with that.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to just confirm if there was any change, but at this point, no.
Okay.
Would you be willing to make this lot a two-bedroom home?
The new one?
The new one.
Oh, sure.
Anybody here that want to be heard on this application, since I see some people in the audience? No? Okay. All right, before we close the hearing, you have your last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really hope that you issued the request for the variance tonight. I don't believe that there's a detriment to the neighborhood. I believe that the lots would be consistent with what's there right now, and, and we just ask that you approve that.
Before we close it there? Any wiggle room here at all?
I guess it depends what it is. I mean, we're always up for, you know, having a discussion to try to resolve this or come to an agreement amicably, of course.
Well, my concern is that, you know, granting the variance on something that's 5,000 square feet less than what it's supposed to be, and then somebody else buys some property and comes in front of this board and says, "You did it for him. It's a hardship we can't build on the lot." I've got a problem with the future and the precedent this may set. That's where I have a problem.
Well, there's, I'm going to make a comment on this. We've gone down this road on the old lots, going back into the pre-sixties, well, fifties, forties. It's nice to see that this thing was actually built in the forties, because frankly, if it was built in the eighties, my recommendation was clearly this had to come down.
Yep.
So saying that, I understand what our other board members are saying. However, I take a motion.
Will you close the hearing? Is the hearing closed?
Yeah, she had her last word.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'll make a motion to subdivide the lot, to make it a two-bedroom, and to cut off this jog in the back, yeah, it's got to come off, to reestablish the lot line where it is. That's what I'd make a motion to do.
There's a motion, there's a motion to, there's a motion to approve it for strictly a two-bedroom home and to remove the encroachment outlined on the plan and marked with my X.
I'll second it.
You can't second it?
I second.
Because it's the five full-time members on this one.
That was on the, on the continuing.
You're on the, you're on the continuing line, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, you're correct, yep. All right, so Bob made a motion. Did he second it? All those in favor?
Second on what? To make a motion for a two-bedroom?
Yes.
Two-bedroom, okay.
Yes, there was a motion to make it.
Can we put any amount of square feet on this also?
You can make a motion after I get done with this motion, yes, if you want.
Okay.
So there's a motion to make it a two-bedroom and remove the existing encroachment?
Yeah, I can.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Do you have a second motion?
I would like to see some restriction on the square footage of this, even though it's a two-bedroom, they can be very big bedrooms.
How many square feet, minimum size house?
I'm open to suggestions on that.
I mean, it's only 10,000-square-foot lot, so obviously, even with complying with the sidelines, frontage, and setback requirements, you are going to be limited to the size of the house that we can put there.
So we're looking at about 1,000?
Not to exceed 2,000?
That's about reasonable?
That's reasonable, yes.
That's unreasonable? Okay, there's a motion, there's a motion to.
Second.
Not to exceed 2,000 square feet along with the two-bedroom, and it's seconded by John. All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, great, thank you. Glad we got through that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzette, appreciate it. Okay, so we have.
Is that, is that going?
Yeah. I need that plan, by the way.
Oh, you need, okay, good. You need that one? Okay. I don't know, do they want these?
Okay, and I believe this is the last hearing for tonight. This is on the application of Barlow Signs, which is also a continuance. You want a second, and I'll be right with you. Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, sir.
Good evening, my name is Greg Moore with Barlow Signs.
Greg, good to see you again.
Thank you, Greg.
Hopefully, we got a little bit more clarity tonight than we did the last time, because I think there were some major concerns the last time. So give us an idea of what's transpired between now and the last time.
So, again, thank you for having me back tonight. I think one of the major points in this was the clarity over the zone and the zone regulations regarding the signs that was here today, and that's proposed. Meanwhile, we went back to the city and, or back to the town and asked for standard approval on this, on this sign through the permitting process. We didn't have much time to clarify some of the stuff that I, that came back as feedback when it was denied, a verbal denial, and then that was followed up by an email, so I could get, so I get some clarity.
Well, let me kind of clarify. We continued it because there was some dialogue going back and forth that it was, it was way too high, and that the board was willing to work with it to bring it down a bit in size, because this is not a shopping center.
Right.
It was 100,000 square feet. So that's how kind of we left it.
Correct.
And you were going to go back and try and see what you could fit within the signing bylaws, and then work from that point forward.
And I think, and that's where, and that's where we need to do a little bit more research, and we wanted to, you know, conform to the laws, to your bylaws here, but also give adequate signage to the tenants.
Yep.
And so, so during that process, we did find out that 30 feet was, was our limit for, for height of a sign.
Okay.
Okay? And we were also.
By right.
By right, by right, thank you. And then we were also allowed four square feet of signage per, per linear foot of road frontage. This, this property has 230 feet of road frontage, which translates to 920 square feet. We're only asking for 300, and it's just shy of 340, 339.7. As, as you're aware with this building, one of the biggest things for the tenants is that there is an adequate wall space for, to advertise for the tenants that are in this building. There are currently 12 tenants, so what we've done here is we're, we've worked on the sign designed to be able to accommodate these 12 tenants, and, and by doing so, we feel that we're, we're within our rights for a sign.
So are you telling us that you're not changing what you submitted?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it was under careful review. This isn't just our decision of the sign. I'm also joined this evening by two of the tenants in the building. We're here in support. And I do want to reiterate that, one of the things that we weren't able to clarify before coming back tonight was that the denial that we received, like I said, was, was, was a verbal, then we asked for a follow-up. The email that came across it says that we cannot approve this because it was 42 feet high, and where you're only allowed 30.
What, what email are you referencing, and from who?
The lady's name is Ms. Robertson, Erica Robertson.
She's in the building department.
Building department. So she denied this based on 42. I think it was either an oversight on that, we're not asking for 42, it's clearly 30 feet from grade.
30 feet from grade?
No.
So what is allowed by right? How many, what's the height allowed by right?
30.
Okay. And what's the, what's the width allowed by right?
It's, it's not done by width, it's done by square footage. And all combined signs states that it's not more than four square feet per foot of lot frontage.
So when you did your calculations, is the signage within the full legal aspects of the signage bylaw?
Yes.
So what you've submitted is within the signage bylaw? Everything here is-
Based on, based on-
By right.
Based on our understanding, yes, it's by right.
So why do you have to be here?
Because there was, we came here originally because there was two different, two different codes that were brought forth.
Okay.
This is the one that we were able to finalize, and that's why I wasn't able to present this, this, this code to you at the last meeting, last month. So I'm presenting it back, because we did ask for a continuance. There was a misunderstanding with the building department, because they were only impressing those 42 feet. It's not, I, I believe this sign is 100% conforming.
Yeah, because you wouldn't need, if you've totally conformed, you don't need us. You can pull the permit tomorrow.
That's, that's, that's our understanding. I mean, unless you, unless you folks see it any other way.
And that's why I, I, you know, and I don't know what the confusion was at the building department, and maybe they just didn't calculate properly, but if you submitted, if you submitted it over there this morning, you probably would've got a permit, if it's, if it's all done by, you know, by, allowed by right by the regulations that you follow. So you believe that everything you've submitted to the building department currently right now is legit and by right?
That's correct, I mean, it's, we've reviewed this, and we feel comfortable with that. That's what it is. I mean, the only thing that I got back was those 42 feet, and so-
So other than that, they were fine with it?
Yeah.
We, we don't need to take any action, then?
There's no action to be taken, he can pull the permit.
Right, right.
We, we shouldn't take any action.
There's no reason to take any action, this is allowed by right. So you should go pull your permit. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Glad we got, I'm glad we got, I'm glad we got through this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And now it's on.
And sometimes, when you're, when you're reading the guidelines, it, it can be difficult to figure out the footage and, and between length and width and the square footage based on frontage. So I know you had to go through this exercise, and I'm sorry you had to come back here, because you really don't need a special permit for us, because it sounds to me like all you need to worry about is pulling a permit. So you go to the building department, you know, do you have your-
Well, we'll work it out internally with the billing department, and I'm sorry that it's, it's taking up some of your time.
If you feel, if you, I mean, there's, we don't need to vote, because, you know, clearly you're within your, your rights in the signing bylaw. If you feel that, that you're not, then we'll continue it, but then you can just send a letter in and, and indicate, you know-
If you would, please.
You can withdraw it.
If you would, please, just in case we encounter anything that we can revisit, but I-
Because I don't want, I don't want, I don't, I don't think we want to make a decision tonight for you, and then you got a 20-day appeal period, and then you can't, you're better off just go pull your permit, and we'll continue it to the next hearing, just as soon as you get your permit. Give us a call, or give Kelly a call, and then we can withdraw it.
Is it a special permit? Does he need a special permit, or not?
He's under the zoning bylaws.
No, I, I- That's what I'm asking, does he need a special permit, or can he just go pull it?
He can pull it.
Because if he needs a special permit, that's what we're here for.
Right.
Right, but he thought he needed one, originally, and then when he recalculated, he's within the zoning regulations of the sign bylaws.
Got, gotcha.
So he should withdraw this one.
Well, what I want to do is, for his, for his benefit, I'd rather just continue it, so he can pull his permit, and if he's got a problem and needs to come back, that's, that's right, it's there for you in the event there's a hiccup.
I appreciate that, because, I mean, we should have information within the week and bill to alert you and bill to withdraw.
I would definitely go and try, and get it done, pull the permit. I will continue this-
Thank you.
But I'd like to get notification, once you got your permit, and then you can just withdraw.
Absolutely, we'll give you notified.
All right, great. So we'll continue that, Kelly, out, out of the, out of caution for the applicant until the, until the 13th. Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second, second.
Mark, motion by Mark to adjourn, second by John. All those in favor? Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.